3:00 PM. If we could go ahead and start with Elizabeth introducing ourselves, please.
Elizabeth Edwardson, Associate Planner for the City.
Kyle Kearns, Director of Community Development.
Jeff Roots, Planning Commission.
Lee Tao, Commission Member.
Steve Schiffler, Planning Commission.
Ryan Austin, Commission Member.
Matt Zachar, Mayor Committee Chair, Commission Chair.
Dennis Pollak, Six Word Alderman.
And we have Eric Daven and Katie Bailey on Zoom on the speaker. So we will begin with Item One, Approval of the Report from May 5, 2025, Planning Commission Meeting. Commission, what are your wishes?
Motion to approve.
I got a motion by Tao, second by Maroots. Any questions or comments about the minutes? Seeing none, go ahead and cast your votes. All those in favor say aye.
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 Eric?
Aye.
All right. Motion passes seven ayes to zero nays. Item Two, Public Hearing in Action on a Request from Catherine Landerholm for a Conditional Use Permit to Establish a Bed and Breakfast at 2011 14th Avenue North, Parcel ID 3402107, which falls within the Mixed Residential R2 District. Ms. Kearns?
Thank you. I'm going to turn this over to Liz to give a background.
Thank you. So background on this request, the... Sure. Oh, yeah. Thank you. How about that? Is that better? That's awful. That's not better. Hopefully, okay. I'll just be up here. So the property is zoned Mixed Residential R2 District. And the applicant is requesting to establish a bed and breakfast on the property. Bed and breakfasts are a conditional use within this district, and they're an accessory use. During the review, it was found that the lot size is sufficient for the proposed secondary use. The bed and breakfast use shall only occur within a single-family residence where the operator lives on-site, and in this case, that standard would be met. The use is compatible with the surrounding residential uses and complements the nearby commercial uses as well. The site appears to have adequate parking to meet the requirement for bed and breakfasts, and the proposed operational hours would be compatible with the surrounding uses as well and should not be detrimental to the surrounding neighborhood. And finally, the use should not impede the normal development and improvement of the surrounding area. Our recommendation is to approve with conditions. The condition being that the bed and breakfast shall comply with all standards for bed and breakfast use definition as outlined in Chapter 11 zoning.
All right. Thank you. Commission, what are your wishes? Oh, questions or comments at this point before we open up the public hearing? Seeing none at the moment? Go ahead and open up the public hearing. I will open the public hearing at 4:07 PM. Anyone wishing to speak for or against this issue, please come forward at this time. Come to the mic. Please make sure the yellow or green button is on and state your name and address, please.
There we go. My name is Elizabeth Wayland. My address is 211 15th Avenue North, Wisconsin Rapids. So my thoughts on the bed and breakfast were just... I don't always know how all this works, so bear with me. Was that... The first initial, like, becoming a bed and breakfast was two years ago? And I'm just wondering why it's now that it's coming before getting the zoning change? For one thing. I also don't see anything in the request that has anything to do with the dog boarding that occurs. And I was wondering if that was something I just missed or if that's not been part of the request? Because that's what happens there as well. And it's on the website and everything for the business. So is that rolled into this being a bed and breakfast? Or is that a separate zoning request?
Do you have any information?
Would you like us to answer that?
Is it relevant to what we're...
Perhaps, yeah. So we're addressing this now because it came to our attention not too long ago. With regards to the boarding, if it is under the either definition, we have a commercial boarding definition in the zoning code, and then I think we have a small boarding kennel definition. If it qualifies for one of those, then it'd have to pursue a separate process to get approval, so...
So it has not?
No, and I don't believe it's part of the approval today.
Okay. So...
This is just for the bed and breakfast as defined in our ordinance, which is also identified in the staff report.
Okay. Shouldn't we address that, then, Commission Members? That's all. Thank you.
Sure. I would also note that there's probably a little bit of gray area in the code if somebody is staying at an establishment very similar to a hotel or motel, and they have a pet with them, right? They pay an extra pet fee. I don't think that would qualify as boarding. Now, if they're doing something separate where they have kennels on-site and you don't have to stay there and you can board a dog or a cat, that I would consider that to be kenneling. But if it's just a person that's traveling and staying at the bed and breakfast with a pet, that would be separate.
Yes. So thank you. If you would like to come forward, please speak into the mic. If you'd say your name and address, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Hi. My name is Catherine Landerholm. I live at 2011 14th Avenue North. Two years ago, I did inquire with the city with the... And what process I would need to take in order... And I moved in the house three years ago, I believe. But, and my parents have been Rudolph, so I'm here to take care of them as well, and I work full-time. But I wanted to, as a single person in this large home and a beautiful property, I wanted to establish some extra income because I work in land development, and that was going down the tubes. So I was trying to figure out how I was going to make some other income. So that's where I happened upon the idea to do a bed and breakfast. And I did all my research. I did all my due diligence. I contacted the city, several people. Erica, Josh, that I know of, I believe that's Josh, and several other people, and they directed me in the right departments. I had somebody come out. I said, "Just look at it. It's a 1914 home. Just look. Let me know if I can do a B&amp;B in here." As I said, it's 1914. I have a bathroom on the first floor, three bedrooms on the second floor. So that's it. And then I have an office bedroom. I work from home, remote, and I use that room. So I was trying to get some income. I am 66, so I'm trying to figure out how to make some extra income if I lost that job. And I did actually lose that job in June, so my foresight was well done. So I contacted everybody. They said it was okay. I just asked them to come out and take a look. What do I need to do? Erica. And she came out and she said, "This is great. Let's just do it now." I'm like, "What? Really?" Okay. So it's kind of fast. But that was in June. I established the B&amp;B. Everybody approved it. I passed the, you know, whatever they need to do. Got my license. I got my... Then I got my LLC. I pay my taxes. I got my, you know, PIN number and started the B&amp;B. It was very slow the first year. Second year was really good, and everything's been fine. I did call the city a couple months ago to see... And oh, and I actually, I also started Rover, which is... I work for Rover as dog sitting. I do have two small dogs, which are licensed and registered. Everything's good. I have a totally fenced-in, .29-acre property. Upgrading the property, trees and, you know, lots of landscaping and all that. Trying to bring business into the community because I know there is none. I mean, per se. A lot of my neighbors are elderly or unemployed, so I'm trying to bring business into the community. That's really all I want to do. So, and plus extra income as I'm entering retirement. So I did, I'm doing the Rover, and I only have, I can only do two dogs at a time, and I don't take any breeds that are not covered by my Travelers Insurance or my Umbrella Insurance. I do have insurance through my Travelers to compensate for people staying in my property. I have all that paperwork. Everything's above board. I'm doing everything that I'm supposed to be doing. I called, so I'm like going all over here. So I called a couple months ago, I guess, and I spoke to Josh, I guess, in engineering. I'm not sure. I wanted to move. There's a room in my house that would be better for guests, and I only have two rooms, four people at the most. So I wanted to move. It's a very small bathroom, and it's very unusual the way this house is set up in the first floor. There's a huge room and then a very small little bathroom. And I want to have my parents either move in with me. One of them is going to pass. I think it's going to be my dad very shortly, and I'd like to have my mom live in there. So I want to make it accessible for wheelchair into the bathroom area, which would just be a shower and a toilet. I called Josh, asked him, the plumber said I should call him. I think his name is Josh. The plumber, Rasmussen, said I should call him just to see if I can put that sink in the outside room. And he said I need to get an architect. Like, I can't pay for an architect. I don't even have people renting yet. So, and he just said I need to get an architect to see if I can have that. And it's like, what, $5,000? I have no idea. To move a sink. So right now, it's just staying there. And that's when all this started. He said, "You have to be compliant. You have to have a permit." I'm like, "I have a permit. I've had a permit for two years. There's a sign." I called him about the sign on my house. It's just, I'm sorry. I'm just flabbergasted that all of a sudden, I'm not doing something I'm supposed to be doing, and I'm just trying to make a living and help the area. I'm sorry. I'm very upset about this. But, so I haven't done anything with the bathroom. I'm here to ask for a permit so I could have this B&amp;B. And apparently Rover's not good either, so now I need to do that. And I have people booked for the summer. And that's what I've been saying for the last two months. And now they're ripping up the road, so that's going to be an issue as well. I mean, if I can't do it, I won't do it, but I'm not trying to do anything wrong.
Thank you.
Do you have any questions? Anybody?
I guess I'm just a little bit confused. Kyle, can you... Are we talking about the same thing here?
I know. Now it's turning into two.
So the application we received was for a conditional use permit for bed and breakfast. A hobby kennel is defined in our ordinance and is allowed in this district via a separate conditional use permit. We could have lumped them together had we known about the hobby kennel, but she can nonetheless come back at a future date and request for that hobby kennel as well. We did not notice it as such. It wasn't part of the application, but we can still act on the bed and breakfast. Moreover, I would note that a few years ago, the Common Council reduced the restrictions for a tourist rooming house, which is similar to a bed and breakfast, but more of an Airbnb where somebody has an extra room in their house and you can, or a vacation rental by owner, VRBO. And that restriction used to require a conditional use permit as well, but council removed it and essentially allowed for it to occur as a permitted use within our residential districts. They did not do the same with bed and breakfast. I think the difference with bed and breakfast is typically they're a little bit larger. There are a couple rooms that could be offered, and obviously breakfast is served at a bed and breakfast. I think both do very well for our community in increasing our rooms in the community that we have to offer for different events. I think they bring dollars to the community, and that's why we're supportive of this request. In terms of the timing, again, we've addressed it as soon as we've become aware of it, and there are noticing requirements. So we were made aware of this about a month and a half ago, but because of the noticing requirements and notifying the neighbors, we didn't get it out until this meeting date. Nonetheless, we're supportive. We're recommending approval, and I think it's a good thing for the area and the neighborhood.
Okay. So I... All right. I'm going to, I got to... Because this is a public hearing, I'm just asking for the public. It's a legal thing.
Oh, absolutely.
So I think all we're looking to do is, you know, let everybody talk and then take a vote on what this conditional use permit is asking for you to be able to do, which right now, everybody's in support of unless there's people in the audience that aren't.
Right. And I really, my first concern are my neighbors because they have to live with me, and I live with them, and I'm very respectful. My two personal dogs are very quiet. I have, you know, I'll take maybe one or two, two at the most other dogs. I mean, obviously, it's just me, and it's a great area for dogs, and they love being there. If you actually go on to, I'm actually, I had no idea I had to have a conditional use permit. I mean, it just shocks me that I could be in violation of something. So that upsets me. But if you look online, I am on Booking.com. They take a percentage. I'm on Rover.com. They take a percentage. I also have my own personal website that my daughter has set up for me. I pay that every month. I pay taxes. I pay fees to everybody. You know, I'm trying to do everything that I should be doing. If there's a problem, then I address it immediately. I mean, I'm there 24 hours a day, literally, if I'm not helping my parents who are in Rudolph. I mean, that's just occasionally during the day because they're very sick. But I, you know, I don't know what else I could do except follow the law, obviously, and try to make it the best I can. I love living here. I've been coming up here for 30 years, and I love my home. It's my first home, so this is really a wonderful experience for me. I just want to make it better for the neighborhood.
Yeah. It sounds to me like we're just, we're going through a formality right now in order to get you what you need, and so far, I haven't heard anything to the contrary. We just have to kind of get through the public hearing.
Okay.
I appreciate everything you're saying, but at this point, we got to finish the public hearing. I got to do two more calls. Yeah. And then from there, we'll close it up and see where the commission's at.
Okay. So I leave?
I appreciate, yeah. I appreciate it. Well, no. Thank you. Yep. So I'm calling for the second time. Anybody wishing to speak for or against, please come up to the mic. It should still be on, and if you'd say your name and address, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Hello. My name's Cheryl Smith, and I just purchased the property at 340 15th Avenue North and rehabbed it. So kudos to you for all that work. I know how hard it is. And my thing is, the B&amp;B, is that going to affect our taxes by it being a kind of a business in the area or anything? I'm not sure how that works.
I would have to talk to our associate.
Okay. So that's something I can, we have to follow up on, which...
It's a residential house still. It's not turning it into a business property.
Okay. And then there's going to be a kennel, correct?
No, no.
Oh, okay.
The dog, I have two dogs. I have two dogs personally, and they're very small, like 20 pounds at the most. And I have to take two dogs in at the most, usually just one.
Okay. Because...
They sleep on it better.
Oh, the dogs will be inside, I think?
I have the wrong impression because I see on your website, it says Dog Care Services.
Yeah.
$50 a night, puppy ring, daycare services, extended care. To me, it looks like you're running a kennel. No, no, not at all.
That's what I understood.
I appreciate the feedback. Thank you. But we do have to kind of keep this as a public hearing and letting the commission know.
Okay.
Yeah.
I was just wondering about the noise from animals is my concern.
Well, I'm just saying the talking amongst, because you guys can always talk to each other afterwards, you know? But right now, we just have to finish this up, so... Again, I'm sorry for being a stickler. Okay. So for the third time, then, I ask anybody who wants to speak for or against this issue, please step forward. All right. Thank you, everybody, for your comments. I'm closing the public hearing at 4:24 PM. And now I'll put it to the commission for questions or comments on this issue.
Motion to approve the request for the applicant to establish a bed and breakfast at 2011 14th Avenue North.
I got a motion by Austin.
Obviously, subject to staff recommendation.
To approve, subject to staff recommendations.
Second that.
I have a second by Tao. Any other questions or comments? Seeing or hearing none, we'll go ahead and cast your votes. All those in favor say aye.
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 All right. All those opposed say nay. Ayes have it, seven to zero. Thank you for investing in our community and good luck with your ventures. Item Three, Request from the Community Development Department to Adopt Final Downtown Master Plan. Ms. Kearns, did you have anything to add?
Just looking for formal action. Not much has changed since we had a joint meeting two months ago. I apologize in the delay in getting this to you for formal action. The plan was formatted a little bit better, a little bit clearer. There were some grammatical changes that were made. There are still a few that I found in this most recent version, so we'll certainly be correcting those. And then your recommendation will be taken to Common Council for final adoption via resolution, and then we'll have a master plan for guiding our downtown development for the next 10 to 15 years. Thank you.
Thank you. Just for clarification, you're asking if we're willing to adopt this one as is, even though you found a few things you would like to change, and we'll vote on those at a future date?
So I'd like recommendation on approving the downtown master plan subject to, you know, corrections made, spelling grammar corrections made. And then that final draft will go to Common Council via resolution for final formal adoption.
Okay. Commission, what are your wishes?
I'll motion to accept the request with corrections.
All right. I got a motion by Maroots. I will second the motion. Zachar, seconding the motion. Any other questions or comments on the downtown master plan? Hearing and seeing none, we'll go ahead and cast your votes. All those in favor say aye.
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 All those opposed say nay. Ayes have it, seven to zero. Item Four, Chapter 11 Zoning Code, Driveway and Parking Lot Ordinance Amendment Discussion. Ms. Kearns?
Thank you. So this item's been before Plan Commission for two months now. It was kicked back down by the Common Council in addition to some standards for the commercial gravel driveways. So I think Ryan had some comments at Common Council, Alder Austin. I think there were some additional comments from others. So we have not, we've not drafted an ordinance because we want to make sure that we're incorporating, you know, all the requirements that Plan Commission and/or Council would like to see in an ordinance. We have done a little bit more research, and we can share some of that research if you'd like. Otherwise, we're open for additional comments or questions about it.
All right. Thank you. Commission?
Okay. Yeah. Liz, would you mind sharing that, please?
Yes. So looking at the zoning codes of 10 different communities in Wisconsin for their gravel standards, if they have any... What was found is that gravel is most commonly permitted for rural or agricultural, sorry, agricultural zoning districts for these communities. And some of them identify other uses or the ability to use gravel in other zoning districts, such as industrial. So for semi-truck parking, trailer parking, parks and cemeteries, schools, universities, locations where the intersecting road is gravel, lightly traveled surface drives for non-residential uses, emergency access drives and outdoor storage areas where some of those various identified uses where gravel is allowed, sometimes with conditions. Of these 10 communities that we researched, Stevens Point was the only one that specifically permits gravel for residential driveways with their specific regulations for where that gravel can be located and how it can be installed. Some of the other communities that allowed gravel for driveways and parking areas also had specific regulations relating to driveway access and if they require a certain setback from the right-of-way, especially if that right-of-way itself is hard-surfaced. So on the screen here, it's a couple of quotes from some of the zoning codes looked at requiring a certain setback of so many feet from a stormwater management facility or public right-of-way, just requiring that gravel is setback enough. So 20 feet, 25 feet, some, those are some of the numbers there. And then here are some other regulations that were imposed by communities that allow gravel. So Stevens Point has these regulations for the driveways and then for the parking areas. And then Marshfield and Weston also have some specific gravel regulations. And then some of the communities didn't outright allow exceptions to hard-surface requirements. Rather, they left it up to the reviewing authority, whether that be Planning Commission or Common Council, to determine if there could be an exception. So that concludes the research for that.
Thank you. Commission, questions? Ms. Tao?
So with this Chapter 11, let's say if we did pass this now, is this going to grandfather those that are already gravelled? And then it's just pertaining to newly built ones, right? Or modifications?
So under the current code, those that are already gravel are grandfathered in. They can exist. They can be maintained. Maintained meaning that you fill in the ruts if they create ruts. They cannot be expanded. And you have to have hard surface for new driveways. You have to have hard surface for commercial-type uses if there's vehicles driving on that area.
Okay.
Hard surface meaning asphalt, concrete, or pavers, paving stones.
Anyone else? Mr. Austin?
Yeah. I guess I'll just reiterate my position on this. In order for me to move this ahead, again, I would want to turn what is being, you know, mandated in this ordinance into basically suggestion. You know, I think, to me, these specifications for gravel installation, again, are quite costly. And, you know, I think we should leave it upon the property owner to determine their best method of construction. I think, you know, if we include in the ordinance that... I think, you know, if we if we include in the ordinance that, you know, we will not gravel would not encroach in the city right of way. I think that puts us at that twenty or twenty-five feet, um, from any public right of way, um, with the gravel installation. And again, as we talked about previously, um, I would want to change this ordinance to to allow gravel driveways, not just, um, auxiliary drives. So, you know, again, the the costly rigid construction standards, you know, the deep base layering, the underlayment grids, the setbacks. You know, to me, it's 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 all overreaching. Um, I feel like the setback, you know, like I said, city right of way is one thing. But, uh, you know, a property line similar to the setbacks of, say, fencing is 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 what I would be in favor of. You know, instead of overly restrictive mandates, I encourage the can the commission to adopt a much more balanced approach and allow property owners to make their own decision on, you know, how they want to construct their driveway or their gravel driveways. So that's my position.
Mr. Tao?
Got a comment on that. You know, um, from my perspective, if it's a new construction, wouldn't they want or prefer a paved, um, a hard surface versus a gravel surface on a new building? Wouldn't that be more aesthetically pleasing than just gravel? And, you know, I I think with this code, we are grandfathering those that already have that gravel. And it, like I said, you know, it's it's pertaining to more of a newly built, um, home, which I think if they're going to spend that much money building a home, that they would spend the extra and build the and pave it to make it look more appeasing to the neighbors, you know. That's just my comment on it. I would be voting in favor of this.
Mr. Rans?
Yeah, well, the the point of this is to try to help reduce costs, um, to homeowners or property owners within the city. And I don't know if you've checked into cost of concrete or or asphalt, um, installation, but they're they're extremely high, extremely high. And gravel would offer a much cheaper option for property owners, um, to have a hard surface and to be able to park their vehicles legally on their on their property. Um, because obviously, it's got to be hard surface, you know, and and it it's not just pertaining to new construction here in my mind. You know, we're talking about auxiliary parking, um, or any gravel within the property. So it's not just, I mean, it's not just new construction, uh, an existing property with a driveway. We're talking about if they want to add on, you know, additional driver, additional parking. So it's it's more encompassing than just new construction.
Mr. Maruts?
I know I have a gravel driveway and and the apron's there that sets it back about ten feet. That's because there's a curb there. But when I walk around the corner, there is no curb. And my neighbor does have a gravel driveway out to the road. And it it suits him fine. He does have a driveway up further. He has an apron by the house. I agree with the setbacks. If there's a curb in place to put the apron in there and the sidewalk apron, um, I'd have a hard time with the with the base layer. If if you go to that extent to make a base layer, I would just probably have to go further and put the concrete in. So I just, I got three inches of gravel. I I believe in the crush gravel. That's what I have down and it's it's sitting just fine for two years. That's my comment.
All right.
So there's some of it that I will accept, and there's just some that I just have a problem with. How we it's just a matter of how we set this ordinance up to help people out.
Okay. Yeah, I think.
I had a question.
Go ahead, Eric.
Go ahead, Eric.
Do we have requirements or similar, um, needs for somebody wants to put in the concrete or asphalt? Does it do they have to have so much thickness for a base layer or any other similar requirements?
We don't. I think it's just assumed in the industry that if you do asphalt or concrete, you you're bringing in a base layer to make sure that the asphalt and the concrete last. Right? If you're if you're pouring any of that over, uh, you know, organic soils or sandy soils, you'll you'll end up with quite a few cracks and it will not last. So I think in the industry, that's just it's assumed that it'll be constructed properly.
Thank you. I guess I would kind of maybe say what Alderman Austin said, that we're leaving it up to the for concrete, we're leaving it up to them to make it in a way that it will last. So gravel may be the same. You know, if they put down one inch, it's not going to last. We would have to enforce it then. I guess that's my comment.
Thank you. Anyone else? Tao?
Yeah, I just want to summarize, uh, in some of the research we've done, um, in my opinion, what we've seen, uh, from an enforcement standpoint. Right? So the research so shows that most communities do not allow gravel in any form. If they do, it's only for like a park or agricultural type use and not for a residential use. So should Rapids pursue an ordinance that would allow residential driveways? They would be the outlier in terms of the other communities within the region. I think, uh, the primary reason that's the case is from an aesthetic standpoint, right? I think, um, uh, zoning codes over time have become more form based, meaning they they regulate form, they they regulate aesthetics. They try to maintain a level of aesthetics within, you know, suburban neighborhoods or, you know, infill areas that have, right, existing homes on them, to ensure that, right, their property values are maintained and that you don't end up with these massive gravel lots, um, that have weeds growing up and so forth. We do have different zoning code, or I should say, uh, property maintenance codes to address the weeds. But I I will say that I have a concern that if we don't require some sort of, um, additional mechanisms to identify where and how that gravel can be installed, that we will end up with different situations like that. Uh, and the reason I'm saying that is because there are those that have existing gravel driveways that run to Home Depot, grab some gravel bags and just dump it. And it's and suddenly their driveway is now two stall when it was one stall. And maybe it it comes to our attention three, four, or five years after the fact, and we're beyond kind of that maybe legal period to enforce it. But then you see the gra you see the weeds growing up. It's not properly installed. It becomes muddy. There's ruts. And sometimes neighbors are affected depending on how close that gravel is to the property line or to the street. And that's the concern I have if we don't regulate it in any capacity. I also think if we are to to be the outlier, that outlying community, that it's better to do so with a phased approach. Start with something smaller like accessory driveways or auxiliary parking areas alongside the garages, which is frankly where most of the public is requesting or kind of demanding that they have alternative substrate options, right? Most of the time, they have hard surface leading to their primary garage and they've got that boat. Or they've got that third driver, the teenage driver that wants to, you know, park off their hard surface driveway. And in that case, right, they could possibly, under a a phased approach, do that auxiliary bay in gravel. It's setback. It's maintained. And then if if that works over the next couple of years, perhaps then the second phase is to open it up for other driveways. Or we go backwards, right? If we run into issues with enforcement or installation, people taking advantage of the install, then maybe we go backwards and and we restrict it even further. I think that's the comfort level that we as staff feel most comfortable with and would suggest. Nonetheless, if Plan Commission has a different opinion or common council directs us otherwise, we can bring back an ordinance that I think would, um, would appeal to whatever you the desires are of the commission and the council. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Steve?
Uh, I would I would agree with the staff's opinion on this and and I would.
It's hard to hear you.
I'm sorry. I said I would agree with staff's, uh, opinion on that and defer to their expertise on the on the matter. And yeah, I do believe that you need to have some regulation. You can't just, uh, say we'll just leave it up to the individual property owner to to make the right decision. So, uh, I would I would vote that way.
Would anybody like to, uh, cede some of their time for a person in the audience that would like to speak? Thank you. If you could, once again, make sure the green light's on or yellow and, uh, let us know your name and address, please.
Once again, my name is Elizabeth Wayland. My address is two eleven Fifteenth Avenue North, Wisconsin Rapids. So I we I we live on the west side. We have, and I travel all around the city and I see all different kinds of driveways. I see, you know, people, um, that have gargantuan, um, in front of their house and all around, um, concrete. I've seen, you know, the, um, the different, uh, gravel driveways and that. And some that are, you know, better maintained than others. But I I kind of agree with Ryan that, you know, it's, um, there does need to be, I feel, more flexibility to allow people, um, to adjust to those situations that are coming up. Sometimes, you know, life is just not as, um, planned. And, you know, we have, um, we actually would like there to be a little bit more flexibility in the materials. We've actually considered getting rid of our hard driveway and that for environmental reasons and going to a more permeable, surface approach with, you know, actually allowing plants to grow in between, you know, these new pavers that they have. Because concrete actually has a really high, um, environmental cost as far as greenhouse gases, um, and climate change. And so I I think we I would like to see, I I do not think of concrete as being this attractive, um, lovely thing that we should have more of. I think people need to have, uh, some flexibility and I don't really care. I mean, we're we're definitely feel like, um, we're our own city. We can, you know, do our own thing in a way and, you know, what works for the residents of Wisconsin Rapids. So that's my thought.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone else on the commission?
Yes, actually, I'd like to say a few words, uh, actually along those same lines. I, um, I also against concrete because of its high carbon footprint. So I I would have a hard time agreeing to say, let's go ahead and add more concrete. Uh, you know, not only is it expensive, but it's so bad for the environment. I I think there's other, there's got to be other options out there. And I I would just have a hard time saying yes. Moving forward, everyone has to incorporate a concrete driveway.
Thank you. I think this, for me, the struggle is the cost right now. You know, we're dealing with our sky high prices for everything building, to include, uh, concrete, you know, and asphalt, probably stone or, you know, road base too, for that matter. I guess, you know, if we did go down the road of allowing these for driveways, would there be some kind of guidance regulation on, you know, what, how they would have to build this? Or do we just let them do it however they want? Do you know what I'm saying, Mr. Austin? Like, would there be some kind of guidance on it?
I think recommendations would be fine. Um, I don't know that we have to tell somebody how to, I mean, if they wanted have a foot thick gravel driveway, I mean, it's, you know, it it's their decision. It's the property owner's decision. So I don't I don't necessarily want to put any specific standards of construction on it. I think, um, you know, most people are are going to construct or 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 improve their property in a way that is going to last. And, you know, I I would I would expect my neighbors to do the same. Um, so I I just I don't feel comfortable putting restrictions or or specific construction methods to the ordinance.
Thank you. Mr. Kearns, is there like, uh, sorry, um, like on cement driveways, is there, I know there's the setback and you can't widen it to a certain point. But after that, is there a limit on how much how much concrete they can put down? Like if they want to start putting, you know, I'm just trying to figure out, like, if we don't have any kind of direction or regulations on how it goes, can they just dump as much, you know? I guess that's what I'm getting at. Can?
Your con concrete comes into play in terms of the width and stuff when you're driving vehicles on it. Right now, concrete and asphalt hard surface has to lead to a attached or detached garage. If it doesn't, it needs to lead to an auxiliary parking bay on the side of a house. All of that is kind of defined within the code. So for example, you could not, um, you know, uh, put concrete in your front yard because it's not leading to, um, it's not leading to a garage. However, there have been instances where people want a basketball court in their backyard or their side yard. If the vehicles aren't driving on it, it's it doesn't have an apron from the right of way, they're allowed to do that via, uh, you know, how whatever mechanism they wish, whether it's concrete or asphalt. Same with patios. We don't necessarily regulate patios in someone's backyard. It's when you're driving a vehicle on it. Uh, with regards to the next steps, I think we've got enough feedback here where we can bring a a fairly simple ordinance forward to Plan Commission next month. We can notice it appropriately. Should the commission vote, uh, on it and take it forward to council, um, that's fine. Otherwise, we'll we we can have suggestions on, again, very similar to what we had the first time. If Plan Commission or council wishes to add those different conditions, they can do so with the motion, but we can, uh, we can bring it back in its simplest form next month.
Okay. Everybody's good with that.
Thank you.
Kevin, did you want to go ahead? I'll recognize you.
Kevin Fangman, seven ten Third Street South. We have a lot of ordinances. We have ordinance on how much permeable permeable surface you can have. We have ordinance on driveway size. We have ordinance on driveway width. We have ordinances how long you can let your grass grow. And you're going to tell me that we're going to put gravel driveways and say, ah, you can just do whatever you want? That's fine. That makes no sense to me at all. Gravel driveways are destructive to the area. Gravel driveways that that get tracked out in the street, that increase that increases the friction on the roadways and wears them out a lot faster than they are. And if you don't think that's true, then ask yourself, why did they remove the standards for studded snow tires or chain snow tires in streets? It's the same thing. Okay? It's an aggregate. It causes issues. I understand that people have other concerns about it. If you're going to do it, there needs to be standards and it needs there needs to be an apron to try and keep it out of the public roadway. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Any other comments? Otherwise, we will move on to item five. Item five, request from other person, Madeline Palmquist, to review and consider modifications to chapter eleven zoning as it relates to allowable height of residential accessory buildings. Appendix C, discussion only.
Thank you. So we we had a request from an alderman here, uh, to look closely at our height restrictions for accessory structures. Uh, we've done that. Uh, we've attached the memo, um, from Alder Palmquist. And it identifies that there is a different standard within our zoning code, uh, eighteen feet in the, uh, the rural residential district. And then it goes down to fifteen feet, uh, for maximum height in our, uh, R one and R two district. And then it jumps back up to, uh, eighteen feet for our multifamily residential districts and beyond. So we took a closer look at it, um, and identified that, um, we're on the lower end in terms of, uh, other communities and what their height regulations are for accessory structures. You'll see on the screen here the different communities. And you'll see where kind of fifteen feet falls. I think generally, I would be okay in supporting an increase to eighteen feet. Uh, or maybe rethinking a a different way that we could get to a higher requirement. For example, when we were in, when I was in Stevens Point, it was fifteen feet, but that measurement was taken at the halfway point between the peak and the bottom of the rafters. I think that was the case because on a flat roof, right, I think a eighteen foot, uh, tall accessory structure on a flat roof looks like a very large structure. It's almost a kind of a complete second floor. Um, however, a measurement like that where fifteen feet from the, you know, the halfway point between the peak and the bottom of the rafter, um, allows for it to be a little bit more reduced and and not so much of a as of a behemoth for a flat roof. So it it, uh, a measurement like that took into account the roof. We could not, uh, we could not take action on this item, so we will bring this back depending on the feedback we get from the Plan Commission. Uh, next month, we can notice it as such. Uh, but generally, I think I'd be supportive, uh, of increasing that requirement after we've done the research. And I will, uh, turn it over to Liz if she has anything to add, or Madeline, if you want to add anything, given this was your recommendation. add anything, given this was your recommendation.
I don't really have anything to add. Just the, you know, communities on the screen, just looking at those. But turn it over to Madeline.
Madeline Palmquist, resident today at 1231 Cook Avenue in Wisconsin Rapids. I'm, my husband and I are currently in the process of building a house. And I enjoy the complexities of our zoning code. I'd like to think of myself as somebody who can read instructions and follow them if they're clear. And there's a lot of variation to what is required where, which was the point of my referral, is that a single-family home can be built in five residential or zoning districts. Of those five, three, you can have an 18-foot building. Two, which happens to be mine, is 15 feet. And then I run into struggles with, do I redesign my entire house so that my accessory garage matches my house? Or do I shorten the walls of my accessory garage so that I, it's not really usable as an accessory garage and it looks like a 900-square-foot shed at that point? And I don't think it would be of service to my neighbors or the community to have that. In looking at the recommendations from the community development team and talking with my fellow crew behind me today, before the meeting, I think the overall point is that we don't want to have accessory structures that exceed the principal building. You don't want your house to be 30 feet and your accessory garage of 900 feet to be 35 or 40 feet from there. So while I wrote at 18 feet, I think 18 feet is ample for an accessory garage or an accessory structure. I think the overall goal is that your accessory building does not exceed the height of your principal building. Thank you.
Thank you. Is, is there something specific that you need from us tonight?
No, it was just a recommendation, so we, we had time to put it on the agenda, so we decided to get the feedback, if any. Otherwise, know that we will, we'll bring back an ordinance amendment for next month to be acted on.
Commission, questions or comments? All right, seeing none, moving on to item six, adjournment. I will make a motion to adjourn. Second by Tao. All those in favor say aye.
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 All those opposed say nay. Ayes have it, seven to zero. Thanks, Eric. Thanks, Katie. Thank you, everybody.